And welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, August 9, 2021, 6:00 P.M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney, City Attorney Joden.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Holliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this innovative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Drive the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Our regular commission meetings were received April 5, 2021. Do we have any addition? Then it will be submitted, received as submitted. Communication proposals from the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands? Oh, Commissioner O'Loughlin, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I have one item that I wanted to bring forward to the commission this evening. On May 24, the commission received an email through the mayor and commission email related to a question about the current closure of Dodge Avenue. It's a one-block length between Aspen Street and Poplar Street. We were asked to consider whether or not there was a possibility of reopening that street. I believe we received a follow-up email related to this issue on July 16. So I'd like to see if there is consensus for the commission to put this on a future administrative meeting, just to get a full sort of overview from the staff, take any public comment, and then decide whether or not. My understanding is that a potential next step is for the commission to consider reopening that portion of Dodge Avenue, which was closed by resolution by the Helena City Commission in 1997. So I wanted to see if there was consensus to put this on a future administrative meeting to at least have a conversation and just ask any questions that we have on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from the commission on her proposal? Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Mr. Mayor, I would be open to that.
Me as well.
Okay. Madam Hollashaw, would you look into it and put it on agenda?
I will. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other communications from the commission? Do we have, do we have any other raised hands there? Okay. Thank you. Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor, since we have time, I'll give you a lengthy report tonight. I actually have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have had an hours-long update that I'm going to be, I'm just kidding, Mayor.
We'll keep you here.
No, I have no updates for you tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, may I ask a quick question of the, of the City Manager?
Please.
So this doesn't have to happen today, although I think it might be helpful at a future meeting, or perhaps you have someone on staff that could provide. Rodney Street is going. I thought it would just be helpful during these public meetings to give just a recap to the community. So that was just one, one item I was wondering if, if we could get an update at some point.
You bet. Madam Hollashaw?
Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. Yes, absolutely, we can arrange for an update. Would you prefer it at a commission meeting or at an admin meeting?
You know, an update, we can do it at our next meeting, whichever one. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just really briefly, when we do that, could we also maybe do a brief update on the construction on Euclid and Lyndale and the Benton intersection?
Okay. Quick update. You have the floor, Madam Hollashaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Do not have any other updates this evening, and we'll make sure that these updates are provided at a future meeting. Thank you.
Are you done?
That is my update.
Oh, cool. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative John Andrew, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioners, I just have one item to run by you again. The Helena Citizens Council is continuing to look at waste management and recycling, and has recently sent a composting recommendation to the city commission that encourages the City of Helena to change Code 6-1-17 to allow private businesses to divert materials that can be composted and turned into useful products. This also assists in managing our waste stream, and it also would allow the City of Helena to move closer to its goal of 50% waste reduction by 2040. That's the only thing I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Regular items. Move to approve resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the Street Maintenance and Improvement District Number 1 for fiscal year 2022, and levy and assess all property within the district, and to set a hearing date for August 23, 2021. Madam Hollashaw.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. As you referenced last week during the administrative meeting, we had brought this item to you all to just share the update and completion of the assessments that will be levied during the, this current fiscal year, fiscal year 21. As part of that analysis, we had not completed an update and revised the document that had been provided at the admission, or at the administrative meeting, based on further analysis the team has provided, and I'm requesting replacement of the administrative memo as well as the revised change in assessment. In summary, it means there will be no revisions or changes in the assessment amounts and reflects no change or increase in those assessments for fiscal year 21. I do have Director Danielson here as part of an update to you all on the street assessment, as well as our Transportation Director, David Knopki. Both are here to answer any questions. Specific question I know that was raised after the meeting was a request from Commissioner Holliday for an update on the budget, specific to these assessments, and I know that both Director Knopki and Director Danielson have both been working together on that update, and they would be, are ready to provide that to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I do have a question for the City Manager. So in terms of the amendments that we passed during our last budget session, and then the FTEs, from what I understand, were not funded, but I guess if maybe we could just get an update as to where we will be for, for all of our sidewalk priorities, and then also how we're going to carry those out, and what we might need to know in the next year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Director Danielson and Director here to answer those questions.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I have been working since our last meeting to evaluate the status of the Streets Fund. We have accumulated most of the costs for fiscal 21, although our books are not closed and they're not audited, but it has given me an opportunity to go through and evaluate expenditures and revenues as they were budgeted. We did evaluate that and identified that assessment revenue came in about $404,000 more than anticipated. That was primarily due to the budget for fiscal 21 did not change from the budget from the prior year, even though assessments were much higher. And so that budget didn't change, and so that unanticipated revenue came in higher than what we had anticipated for fiscal 21. And we will also be looking at perhaps suggesting our assessment revenue for fiscal 22, but not at this, until I've had a chance to go through that model. With the budget amendments of $400,000 from the commission that was approved with the preliminary adoption, and then working with Director Knopki on actual expenses and some of those maintenance and capital items that will carry over to fiscal 22, that amounted to about $4.3 million of the carryovers that he's identified. And looking at that and comparing it to our cash balances, as of the end of fiscal 22 or budget year with the amendments that were approved, the carryovers that balance will come short about $475,000 than our targeted reserve requirement of $1.4 million. So the amendments, as you recall, were about $400,000, and that depleted our reserve balance to about $80,000 as originally projected, which is what prompted staff to look at identifying if there was a rate increase needed. Those amendments, and then looking at this particular update with the fund, we are continuing to propose no increase or recommend no increase. However, that target reserve, as we project it now, will be less than, than our policy level, which can be identified, resolved in various ways. We can, the commission can make amendments to reduce carryovers or capital projects. The City Manager can, within her budget authority, not approve carryover amendments, some capital expenditures, or we can do what we had originally proposed when we brought forward the City Manager, but it is to evaluate our capital improvement plan and our assessment methodology, and bring forward a structured budget that meets state policy and structural balance, and also have a methodology that makes sense. And so I believe that that's where our recommendations are now. I've discussed this with Director Knopki, and that is the update that I have as of now.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission?
I do just have one follow-up.
Please.
So I know during the budget, we're really figuring out a consistent methodology for, for the capital improvement projects across the city. Do we have a timeline on what that might look like? And I guess it wouldn't just be streets, but I would assume more or less everything. Is that correct?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes. Team is currently working through not only the allocation method, but they will start the capital improvement program. There are not only fleet, but there are also facilities, public works and utilities overall, and the, the street transportation capital improvements. Those capital projects need to have a different lens added to them, and specifically around the carryover. This exercise pointed out one of the flaws of the, of the capital improvement program that we have been doing, and that is that it might not always take into consideration those projects from previous years, which had been promised and not completed yet. And as a result, what may appear as carryover or a reserve balance is actually not. It's already dedicated funds, but we haven't actually incorporated them in the past into the revised capital improvement plan. So it was a very good eye-opener on how that carryover is being handled. It does show that the, the more we rush, the less opportunity we have at seeing what could actually play out. So the timeline is during the next budget, we will be bringing forward to you all a capital improvement program, and both the City Manager's office and the finance team are working together on that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I apologize. I had asked for an updated balance sheet just because I was curious, but I'll go back to the question that I was trying to ask on Wednesday, which is putting aside, right, the one-time-only money that we're spending and the debt that we're taking out in the street maintenance fund. I'm just curious what our revenue over expenditures is, right, on our stable maintenance, because it's been pretty stable for about the last five or six years, and I know we can, well, this year we did a million overlay project, blah, blah, blah. But I, I just want to know what that number is, because on the night of the budget, it spitballed on the fly to about $1.3 million, $1.5 million. And that's why I've been asking for that updated budget sheet, was to see what that number actually is, is to understand what the commission can choose to ride out, right? Do you actually have to be talking about any of this stuff for canceling projects or, or anything like that? So can I still get that number, which I had asked for and been told I would have before this meeting?
Thank you, Commissioner Holliday. Couple things. First, the request, as I recall, it was an update on the, the budget which was provided, and not the distinction that you've requested of the balance of the revenue over expenses specific to just operations and not capital. So what you've got is an update on the budget for the street assessments. So certainly we can make sure to get you the difference. That is the first time that's been requested. I don't want to, to appear as though we are ignoring a request. The second is, we'll make sure that that detail is provided. Any modifications to the budget, as you, as you know, we're working on getting to you all the final budget adoption documents. Those documents include the completion of the actual revenues as calculated through the end of year, as well as the actual expenses. So as with any end-of-year expense, things lag, and the team is continuing to receive and allocate charges from the last fiscal year. So at this point, yes, I can certainly share tonight that the big-picture dollars were provided to you as part of Finance Director Danielson's update, and we will make sure to send to the mayor and the commission the email after this, the revenue over expenditures for just the operation dollars and not the capital.
Yeah, and I apologize. I mean, my email had said in advance of Monday's meeting, right, could we get an updated departmental budget that reflects all of the amendments made on June 28th? So I apologize if that was unclear, that I was looking for an actual budget from the department that reflected the amendments made on June 28th, but I, I thought that was pretty clear of looking for that, because I don't know how we have this discussion. I don't know how we talk about what this budget looks like next year, or what we're budgeting for, without sort of looking at capital expenditures. Again, not going to be my problem from a commission standpoint. It's going to be my problem from a taxpayer's standpoint, potentially. But it, it, it's just, we've had a lot moving targets with this budget. On the night of the final budget passage, we were told this fund was going to get sunk by commission amendments. Then we were told we weren't going to need any increases in the budget. Then we were going to tell we needed a four-point-some-odd increase in the budget, and now we don't need any, but there's talk of carryovers. And it's just, it's shifted so much, and it's so hard for anyone trying to pay attention on the commission, let alone if you were trying to do it as a, as a person at home actually, really trying to figure out what this commission is doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it represents a really clear picture of what the capital improvement program has looked like for the City of Helena, and the trajectory of the lack of detail, as well as the finance system. So I would absolutely love to have the same level of comfort and agree with you that that level of detail is important for making decisions as well. And we do as best we can to get as best we can the information. As you know, we also had an audit that was behind, and these are not excuses, but just the realities of the situation in which we have come to, both Director Danielson and myself, in trying to get as best as we can in response to the questions being asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the team? From the commission?
Yeah, just to, can I just get a Fund 201 budget as it exists today with the amendments from June 28th? That is, that's one that I just didn't fully get the answer that I was going to get.
Yes, as earlier, I would be sending this out to all of the mayor and commission as part of an email through either, excuse me, Director Danielson, I almost called you Commissioner again, Director Danielson, or myself, whichever is quicker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this topic, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I do have one hand raised. This is Sondra Galb.
Go ahead, you have the floor, Sondra.
Ms. Galb, you, you have a live mic.
Okay, we'll get back to her when she can come through with it. Okay. Oh.
Thank you. Regarding the budget for the streets, um, the last meeting was a little confusing and hard to understand. I appreciate Holliday's saying he, that it was very confusing. So was anything decided? It didn't seem like anything was decided between the $115,000 and the $190,000, and it felt like the $190,000 was something that we needed to pursue and collect those taxes, and then figure out how to pay for the $115,000. That's my question.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, at this time, I see no other hands raised online. I have no written public comment online, and it appears there's no one in chambers for public comment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. I'll, I'll take that back, and at this time, I will entertain a motion for the resolution of intention.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the Street Maintenance and Improvements District Number 1 for fiscal year 2022, and levy and assess all property within the district, and to set a public hearing for August 23, 2021.
Second?
Has been moved and seconded. Do we have any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think just maybe for clarification that this resolution does not include any assessment increases for streets.
Any others? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now we'll go back to, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised online. I have no written public comment, and no one in chambers appears to be here to make public comment.
Okay, we'll give another 45 seconds, and then we'll move forward. Do you have any?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any final comments from the commission? At this time, the meeting is adjourned.